Okay. So, let's go ahead and get started. Alright, so the goal of the study session is to just take a look at the expectations for the exam. Very similar to the expectations for the midterm exam. But then also to look at the exam questions and then see if you have any questions about the exam questions. And also answer any questions that you might have about the, you know, the course material. So any, if you have any substantive questions, you can ask those after we go through the questions. So I'm gonna share my screen. Alright, Ashley, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Alright, so as you probably know, towards right towards the bottom. Okay, so here's the final exam information stuff. And let me see if I can move this over. There we go. Alright, so, um. So, the exam questions are available, Ashley, have you been able to download them yet? Is it working for you?
Yeah, I have them up.
Okay, cool. Um, and so, the exam's worth one hundred ninety points, nineteen percent of your final grade. Just like the midterm exam, it's open book, open notes. Um, and that, you have four days to work on it, it's due Monday, May sixteenth at eleven fifty-nine PM. And then, uh, that, uh, oh, here comes somebody, Sienna. Hey, Sienna. Sienna, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we already got started and just to let you know, we're recording. Um, so that other students can watch it. Uh, we are just going through the expectations for the exam and then we're gonna go through the exam questions, okay?
Alright.
Okay, cool. So I was saying that, uh, the midterm exam or the final exam is like the midterm exam, open books, open notes. It's worth nineteen percent of your final grade, one hundred ninety points. Uh, you should have received the questions today and then you have four days to work on it. And they're due Monday, May sixteenth, eleven fifty-nine PM. And, uh, so there are, you know, it's very similar to the midterm exam in terms of the format. There are six questions, you choose four that you want to answer. Uh, that my expectation is that you, in the, in the, when you look at the exam in its totality, that you use information from lectures, textbooks, uh, the textbook, um, uh, any articles we've read. And also for this exam, my expectation is that you pull on, uh, the, the locked-in book. Particularly for one question. Uh, but i- if there are instances with the other questions where you'd like to use examples from locked-in, that's totally fine, okay? So, there's no need for outside resources. You don't need a bibliography page because I know the resources that we're using. But just like with the midterm exam, you're gonna want to do in-text citations within the course of your exam, okay? Uh, just like the, uh, for the same as the midterm exam. You know, about each question should be about two double-spaced type pages. So, for a total of eight pages. Uh, I suggest double-space, space, but if you're more comfortable doing single-spaced, I'm fine, as long as you're using twelve-point font. But on my computer, I can increase the size of font anyway, so it doesn't matter. Um, but if, you know, so if you're doing single-spaced, about a page, double-spaced, two-page answers. Like I said, for the midterm, a little bit less than two pages an answer is fine, a little bit more than two pages is okay. But if you're really like double-spaced, less than a page with an answer, or if your answers are double-spaced, three or four pages each, it's way too much. So make sure that if it's that long, you go and you added it, because you don't need to tell me everything you know about the topic, but you just wanted to answer the question. And same with if it's too short, like, that's, I mean, it could be that you're answering the question, but most likely you're not, like, explaining your ideas or developing your points, okay? Uh, so just, it's ballpark, eight pages. The question, I like to have the question left on the exam, so that it helps you, it helps me when I'm grading. And that doesn't count towards your total pages, right? So like if I'm looking at just what you've written, that makes up the total pages, okay? Uh, do you guys have any questions about the length of the exam? What I'm, in terms of the page length?
Okay.
Um, just like with the midterm exam, answer all the prompts, students lose points because they don't answer prompts, right? And, um, sometimes there's a critical thinking prompt, and so you'll want to not, like, you want to develop your answer to that. And when we look at the questions, I will highlight any of the critical thinking prompts, okay? Uh, and then, uh, as I said, you'll want to pull upon all of the course material for the totality of your exam. It gives you some examples of how to in-text citations. Uh, for the love of all that's holy, if you are using direct quotes, you want to make sure that you put those direct quotes in quotation marks, okay? Because if you don't, it's plagiarism and, you know, I can tell, I mean, when people are taking things from the textbook, I'm just like, pretty familiar with the textbook, so make sure you put things in quotes. Um, and also make sure your quotes aren't too long, because, uh, you know, a line or two is okay, but if, you know, a paragraph of text is just not good. Summarize that, right, and cite it, but don't verbatim it, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not testing your ability to cut and paste stuff from the textbook, okay? So just keep that in mind. And then it's due on Monday. Uh, I only accept late things in extraordinary circumstances, but as Sienna's had me before, she knows, if you are really running behind on Monday and you're not gonna get it in, drop an email. I'm not an ogre and I usually give extensions, okay? It's usually after the fact that kind of bugs me. Um, so if you need a little extra time, don't hesitate to let me know. I will be around grading all weekend and so, uh, if you have questions while you're working on your exam, text me, call me, uh, drop me an email. Texting actually during the weekend is the best way to get in contact with me, but I do check my email, uh, as well, just not as frequently. Um, as I always have my phone with me. Alright, any questions? Alright, hearing none, let me get rid of this, if I am able to. And get rid of that. Alright, so here is our final exam. Okay, so. Just like with the midterm exam, make sure that before you start working on the, after you download it, save it to your hard drive, save it to a zip drive, save it to your desktop. My laptop just crashed last week, I just got it back from Apple Hospital and my whole life was flashing before my eyes, because I was like, oh no, I've lost everything. I mean, I didn't, because it was all up in the iCloud, but I've had students in the past who just like, submit an empty document for their exam and they've lost all their works, make sure you do that and I'm sure you all will. Now, for the final exam, since it's the final, um, I make tons of comments throughout, on people's work throughout the semester, but I've taught for twenty years, a lot of times, students don't look at the comments for their final exams. And I, understandable, right, they want to see their grade, they're ready to move on to the summer. So, I don't make comments unless students let me know they want comments, and it's right there in bright yellow. So if you want comments on your exam, I'll be more than happy to give them to you. And so just leave me a message either on the top of your exam or in Canvas, you know, when you Dropbox it, just put, hey, Professor Hankinson, leave me some comments and I'd be more than happy to do that. Um, what I don't want to do is make a bunch of comments that never get read and I see whether they get read or not, because it tells me. So just, if you want comments, let me know. Alright, let's take a look at the substance of the, of the, of the questions. Okay, so the first question has to do with the Fourth Amendment. And it says that the right of the people, the Fourth Amendment states the right of the people to be secure in their prisons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable search and seizure shall not be violated. So why don't you tell me, what does that mean? So in lecture, we talked about what constitutes a search. What makes a search unreasonable, okay? Because the Fourth Amendment isn't about unwarranted searches, it's about unreasonable searches. So what is the court said about what constitutes an unreasonable search? Do police need to have a warrant to search? And if they search without a warrant, is that considered reasonable? We'll tell you the answer, but you explain it to me. And then finally, there are a lot of cases, Fourth Amendment cases in Chapter Eight. Um, and so, that are interesting. And so select two of those Fourth Amendment cases that you write about in Chapter Eight that you thought were interesting. Briefly describe the facts of each case, including the decision that the court made in this, in the matter. And what do these cases tell us about the Fourth Amendment? And do you agree or disagree with how the court decided in this case, okay? And so explain your answer. Uh, so, uh, you know, the first part of this is pretty descriptive. Uh, but the second part, and let me just put my pink highlighting pen on here. You know, it's this part that, you know, really kind of focus, or focus on both parts, but don't drop the ball on that. Don't be like, oh, there was this case, it was interesting, because it had a sniffing dog in it. And there was another case, you know, that had a GPS device, you know, like really develop your answer there, because it's gonna give me insight into your critical thinking abilities about the Fourth Amendment. So that's the question, Ashley, do you have any questions about that question?
No.
Cool. Sienna, do you have any questions about the question?
Well, that one is, I do have questions about another one.
Okay, cool. I look forward to it. Alright, so the second one is about the court's structure. And so, um, in lecture, we talked about how the court is structured in the United States. And so this is giving you an opportunity to demonstrate that knowledge, so describe the structure and purpose of the court system in the United States. Uh, feel free to draw a diagram of the court system and insert, uh, and insert it into your answer. So, if you, you know, if you want to draw the court, you know, diagram in the United States, you know, the state side and the federal side, totally fine, it's gotta be hand-drawn. Just take a screenshot of it or take a, you know, just take a picture of it and you can upload it, but you don't have to do that. Uh, points to consider, uh, after you describe the structure and purpose of the court. What role does federalism and federal supremacy play in the court structure in the United States? How are federal courts different from state courts? And describe the purpose and function of the three types of courts we talked about in lecture. Trial Courts, appellate courts, and Supreme Courts. Then, yeah, get my little pink pencil here, oh, which I just turned off. This is the critical thinking question. Of these courts, which do you think is most essential to realizing criminal justice in the United States and why? Okay, no right answer there. Um, but pick one, trial, appellate, and Supreme Court and say, this is the one that I think is really important for criminal justice and explain why. So that is that question. Uh, Ashley, do you have any questions about that question?
No, I like that one.
Yeah, I like that one too. Uh, Sienna, do you have any questions?
Nope, not the one.
Okay, cool. Alright. You probably are sick about talking about the prosecutor, right? Locked-in was so much about the prosecutor, but the prosecutor has so much power. Uh, so this is a question about the prosecutor. I want you to describe the duties and responsibilities of the prosecutor. Want you to tell me, how are these different from the duties of the defense attorney? When it comes to charging an individual with a crime, the prosecutor, as we know, has a lot of discretion. Why do they have that discretion? Like, we give the prosecutor discretion, it's come to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court has said, nope, prosecutors have discretion. Uh, and so you tell me, uh, like, why, why, why do we, why do we allow them to have that, um, that discretion? What's the purpose and consequences of prosecutorial discretion? And there, even though it's not in the question, I mean, you could sort of say that there's good things about discretion and then there are some downsides, obviously, about the discretion. And then the textbook lists four factors the prosecutor's taken into consideration when deciding whether to proceed with the case, okay? Uh, the case factors, the system factors, et cetera. Uh, of these four, which two do you think are most likely to impact a prosecutor's charging decision? There's no right answer there, uh, but it's based on what you've learned, explain. And do you think prosecutorial discretion is beneficial or detrimental to the system of criminal justice? So actually, I forgot, the critical, that critical thinking piece is right there at the bottom, okay? Uh, and so again, this would be the pink, this would be the, the pink, critical thinking piece, okay? Pretty straightforward, we've talked a lot about the prosecutor over the course of the semester. Ashley, any questions?
No.
Sienna, what about you?
Yeah, I have a question, um, do you know what chapter, this was in the book? Right here? Or what, mixture?
Uh, I do, but I don't know it off the top of my head, I'd have to bring up my, my textbook and it's, it's, but I can email you afterwards, it's, it's, it's the, it's the, uh, it's the text, it's the chapter about courtroom personnel.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so there's, uh, yeah, it's the one that looks at judges, prosecutors, and the defense attorney. And I can't remember if it's combined with court structure, it could be court structure and court personnel. And textbooks in the past, those have been divided, they might have combined those these days. Uh, but without having my textbook right in front of me, I don't know. Ashley, do you know off the top of your head?
No, I'm trying to look right now.
Right, it's probably like, not eight. Well, anyways, Sienna, I'll email you it.
Okay.
It's Chapter Nine.
Oh, thank you.
Court structure and personnel.
Okay, court structure and personnel, so Chapter Nine. So actually, question two and question three are both Chapter Nine.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Oh, right, I forgot this part. It says the best answer will reference Locked-in, The True Cause of Mass Incarceration, so that's where that is. I had mentioned that, but there's just so much in Locked-in about the prosecutor, so, you know, like the best answers will mention the, that book. Alright, question four is identify and describe the steps in the trial process, starting with the jury section. And just word of the wise, uh, you know, identify and describe the trial process. Just, you don't need to tell me everything you know about each step of the trial process, but just summarize, okay, the different steps. So summarize the main points of jury selection, you know, summarize the key parts of the trial, okay? Um, and so, uh, you know, be judicious and give me enough information, but not too much information. Uh, and then the critical thinking piece here of the steps in the trial process. Which two steps do you think are most crucial for ensuring a just and a fair criminal trial? Why, explain your answer. Uh, so do you think jury selection is like the, one of the steps that, like, you really cannot have a fair and just criminal trial unless you really have unbiased jury selection? Or jurors that like, are, know what they're doing and are good jurors? Um, are the opening statements or the closing arguments, are those keys, right? Um, is it the presentation of evidence, uh, like, uh, or is it the presentation of witness? Is it cross-examination, right? So a lot that you can do with that in terms of selecting which two steps you think are more, most crucial, okay? So it just gives you an opportunity not to just describe the trial process, but then to also critically analyze it, okay? Ashley, do you have a question about that one?
No.
Sienna?
Thank you.
Cool. Alright, here's the hypothetical case. You get to act as a sentencing judge. And so, uh, so you are the sentencing judge and you want to read the case below. And you want to describe the sentence you would give this person. You have complete discretion in terms of the sentence you can impose. You could impose a sentence of one dollar, or, you know, that, a fine of one dollar, or you could, in theory, you could send some to the death penalty, I mean, not seriously, but right. I mean, but there's, you really can do what you want as a sentencing judge. It says you have complete discretion. Now, the textbook describes many goals of sentencing. Identify and explain two of these goals that you hope will be achieved by this sentence, okay? So there's, I gave a whole lecture on the goals of sentencing. Uh, it could be incapacitation, it could be deterrence, right, it could be rehabilitation, right? Could be just desserts, retribution. So identify two of the goals that you hope to achieve by the sentence. Make sure you identify the type of sentence, so if you do give them a sentence of incarceration, you'll want to say is an indeterminate or determinate sentence. I won't tell you the difference, hopefully you remember. And then explain why you selected this, this type, uh, determinate versus indeterminate. If, if, if you're giving them a sentence of incarceration. And then, uh, finally, explain three factors you considered when imposing this sentence, okay? And so, in lecture and in textbook, it talks about there are certain factors that, uh, judges can take into consideration. Such as, is this a first offense? Uh, the severity of the crime, were there mitigating factors, like they committed this offense for money or something like that? Or, and there was like grave brutality or something. Uh, this is the hypothetical, I'll let you read it, uh, you know, it's about a twenty-nine-year-old woman. Uh, she gets drunk and she's in a van and she pulls over to the side of the road, it's passed out. People call the cops, they take her away. She's either so drunk or just doesn't want to get in more trouble, she doesn't tell the cops that her kid's in the back. Uh, they tow the van, as they will do, undrunk driving. And then in the next morning, they find her four-year-old daughter in the backseat. It was a cold night on November twelfth, and that, the, the child is really scared, but unharmed. Uh, but maybe that was just because of luck. And so the prosecutor's recommending the sentence of five years of incarceration. Due to the gravity of, uh, child endangerment and that the, um, the defense attorney is offering, uh, recommending a deferred sentence. Like, if you do these things, like get alcohol treatment, parenting training, that, um, you won't have to serve your sentence, okay? Uh, so that is the hypothetical. Any questions about that?
No.
Sienna?
Uh, this is the one that I had questions on, and I, I'll explain why I think I have questions, because when I was doing the trial thing, uh, we had a drunk-driving case, I had a drunk-driving case that I had worked on. You know, estate against a person. And, um, I was looking up like what the first offense was, second offense, third offense. And so I was kind of thrown off, um, by how much time she was gonna be given. Um, due to, but then I knew it was also because she had a minor in the car under sixteen, okay?
Right, and it, and this isn't just a case about junk driving, this is a case about leaving your kid in a car overnight. And so.
That's why she's got the two counts, the child, okay?
Child endangerment, right.
That was one thing, because I, I knew what one of them was, but I didn't, I wasn't sure what the other one was. And then, um, this is in, I'm assuming in Wisconsin, we're saying hypothetically, or does it make, make no difference in whatever state it would be in?
It doesn't really matter, I mean, it's just that, like I said, that the judge has a complete discretion, so it, it is, the hypothetical is that there aren't, like, you wouldn't want to be looking at sentencing guidelines exactly. I mean, you got kind of an idea, prosecutor wants a lot, defense attorney doesn't want a lot, right? You're the judge, uh, you could, because you have discretion, you could go well above what the prosecutor's asking. You could go below what the defense attorney is asking, right? I mean, so.
That's why I think I was thrown off, because I knew what the Wisconsin ones were for a first offense, you know what I mean? For a first offense, what they were saying the guidelines were.
Yeah, 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 so, but it's, since it's a hypothetical, we're just gonna live in the imaginary world that, you know, the judge can do whatever they want, right?
And then my, my other question was.
I mean, if you were gonna give them the death penalty, right, or, or like, like life incarceration or something like that, you'd have to have a really good reason, right? So, even though it is a hypothetical and you're not bound, I mean, you'd have to explain like, like, oh, I gave them, you know, twenty years, because I, I, the reasoning was I, the reason I did that was because of incapacitation, because they pose a really grave danger to society and it's like, eh, probably not, you know, that doesn't really make sense, yeah.
Okay, and then my other question was, is, okay, so she was arrested at ten-twenty-two, never told the cops that she had a child in the backseat. But, um, then the cop never saw the child in the backseat either?
Okay, yeah, right, so.
And then, and then the workers who came to move the vehicle to tow it to the tow lot that night still never saw that child in there.
Right.
So it wasn't just missed by her, it was missed by two other.
Yeah, but only she, but only she knew there was a baby in there and, you know, that oftentimes vehicles will be searched like, impounded and then searched later, right? So regardless, the person who left the baby and the, the person who got drunk in the van was the mom, not the cop and not the tow person, you know what I mean? So she's responsible for that. Um, and so, uh, but, it's, so when you, when you think about mitigating factors with your sentence, you're gonna want to think about mitigating factors as it relates to the offender, not like mitigating factors as it relates to the police or the, the people who work the tow lot, right? Because they're not the ones who are responsible, right? Okay, I mean, I guess that, you know, who knows in the weird world that we live in, maybe the mom could like sue the police for not checking the vehicle or whatever. But for the case of the sentencing, just focus on the offender. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I just, the reason I asked that too is because there's been cases in the past where bus drivers don't see kids in the bus. And they're, I actually have a nephew who actually had that happen to him, he was, uh, locked in the bus.
Right. The bus driver's responsible for the passengers in their bus, just like the driver of the van is, but, yeah, yeah.
And then I just want to make sure the girl was four years old, correct?
Yeah, is that what it says?
Yeah, okay, you said baby, so I just wanted to make sure she was four, because I mean, I know as, uh, having a brother.
Four-year-olds are babies.
Yeah, four-year-olds can get out of their car seat, so she's lucky that he did.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Daughter didn't leave, is what I'm getting at.
Oh my god, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That kid was probably another gourd.
Yeah, yeah, so at least it slept. But, um, okay, that, that was my, that was my questions, thank you.
Excellent, you're welcome. And then the last one is, uh, describe, compare and contrast the Pennsylvania and Auburn prison systems. Compare and contrast these two systems, first describe the, the two systems, then compare and contrast them. What ways are they similar and what way are they different? What are the goals of these different prison types? Because they have really different goals, uh, and that those goals are based on values and assumptions regarding human nature. So it says what values and assumptions regarding human nature are reflected in these two systems. And which of the, you know, in lecture, I asked my husband, like, which would you like to be in? Uh, so which of the two systems is, which of the two is the system that informs corrections in the United States today? Of these two, which do you think you should be used in the United States? So that, this part of it is a right or wrong answer, right? Which of these two systems informs corrections in the United States? There's a right or an answer to that. There's no right or wrong answer to this one, of these two, which do you think should be used in the United States, Pennsylvania or Auburn? And then finally, if you were incarcerated, like my husband, would you rather be housed in the Pennsylvania or the Auburn system? So, uh, and there's no right or wrong answer to that. Okay, so that's a pretty, pretty straightforward question. So, you guys have any questions about those?
Well, like, how is it, for the one that says which of the two is the system that informs corrections in the United States today? How is there no right or wrong answer?
Think about corrections today and does the correction system that we have today seem to be more like the Pennsylvania system or more like the Auburn prison system, okay? And you know, Ashley, now that, now that you brought that up, it's a really good point, because, you know, it says informs corrections today. So what you could say is that, yeah, you could say, you know what? A lot of our correction systems seems to be mostly informed by X system, but we get little tastes of Y system, right? So, right, so if you were to write that in the exam, that would be a, a super fantastic answer, right? Um, I, I think if you chose one and made us hardcore case that that's what informs our system today, I might be like, no, I don't think so. Um, and that's what I meant, there's like a right or a wrong. Uh, but I think you could definitely say we get a little bit of both, because I think there is some truth to that, I think we do get a little bit of both. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, definitely.
Sienna, do you have a question on that one?
Yeah, um, just a couple, um, uh, I know that in the Pennsylvania system, uh, there was, you had mentioned in the lecture that there wasn't, um, not to say there wasn't monitoring of them, but there was like, they could just show up whenever they wanted, it wasn't like a true guard system. Is that, I don't know if I'm making sense. Um, but that, I know when your husband said to you on the lecture, he said something about, well, you would just sleep all day, or whatever. Uh, my question was, um, in that former system, because they didn't have constant twenty-four-seven guards, um, would that then truly a possibility? I mean, because I know they were supposed to do work in their cells, or whatnot, but, um, I didn't know if anybody really liked, if they had like, you have to make four shoes today and if you don't get four shoes done, you know what I mean? Because there wasn't a lot of conversation, because it was really, you know, supposed to be a quiet reflecting time or whatnot.
Right, and then so I think with the Pennsylvania system, the focus really was on, on using that time to repent and to think about what you did was wrong, right? And to pray and to, um, sort of change your heart. Now, it could be that, I, I mean, I don't think there was like a, make sure you make X number of crafts, whatever. But, I mean, clearly, if the person was just sleeping all day, they'd probably, you know, get encouraged to, you know, work on their repentance, right? Um, and so, sure, I, there really is a lot less monitoring in the Pennsylvania system, because you don't have, we need to monitor people in corrections, because they're interacting with others a lot in the Auburn system. You need prison guards there, because they're let out of their cells and they work with others, it's a congregate system. You have to get up at a certain time, you have to go to bed at a certain time, you have to work a certain time, you eat at a certain time. And that you need to be, have monitoring to do that, right? So not that there wasn't any monitoring in the Pennsylvania system, it was just a different type of monitoring, right? So not that there wasn't any monitoring in the Pennsylvania system, it was just a different type of monitoring, right? Uh, one could say that it was actually sort of scarier because like, uh, you didn't know whether you were being monitored or not. So it was sort of like, you know, the, the panopticon in the middle of the system. That was sort of like looking out and monitoring others. Uh, in, in graduate school, I read this book, I don't even know if I mentioned this in lecture or not, but it's by Michelle Foucault, he's a French sociologist. And it's a great book. And he really talks about, um, uh, that, uh, about the scariness of the, of the, of this, that kind of system where everybody was in their individual cell. And there was a big, like, eye, not literally, but a panopticon in the middle. And it just was watching all of the time. And you never really knew whether somebody was in the middle there watching you as in the, in your jail cell. But it was supposed to design to sort of like, like control you like mentally in a way. So that, you know, that's more like the Pennsylvania system and, you know, you could sort of see that as being sort of like getting in your head, right? That you're alone, you are solitary and that there's this expectation that you are going to reform yourself. And that might be really difficult for some people in terms of choosing the kind of system that you would like to be in.
I just started this too, I, what if you were sick or you, you were dying or something that, you know, you don't know if they were watching you or not, if you would get help?
Yeah.
And if they weren't watching you.
Right.
Um, um. Another thing I had is, um, in, um, either of the systems. I know, I know what you, she was just asking about which system. And I know in your lecture, which one you talked about was the one that kind of reformed, you know, our system now. Um, but one thing I was going to ask, um, that actually the two parts. One is, um, there was never mentioned of anything if anybody could ever have visitors or not? Like we do nowadays, you know, with prisoners.
Right, right.
I, I'm assuming they didn't, but I, you know, but I don't, I, I know it was not mentioned.
Yeah, and these early prison systems were really pretty gross and horrible and, you know, so they probably weren't the same sort of amenities that you would get today in prison. And I'm not saying that you get amenities in prisons, but you know what I mean? Uh, you do get visitation and those sorts of things. So, I mean, I'd have to look back at the history of these places, but I think it's pretty safe to assume that in both the Auburn early prison systems and the Pennsylvania early system, probably didn't have a lot of contact with the outside world.
And then, um, I know that there's, well nowadays, there's that difference between in, in determination and determination with your sentencing. But like back then, what, um, like, did people actually get out of these places? Do you know what I mean? Or did they just die in them?
Oh, it would depend on the, I mean, um, you know, prior to the twentieth century, uh, with reforms regarding sentencing and those sorts of things, that there probably was a lot of variation from state to state, locality to locality, right? Um, and so I'm sure people did get out, I mean, that they did have sentences that were imposed, right? Um, but it, uh, prior to the twentieth century is, you know, really different time period, right? It was more like common law, more, you know, brutal conditions that just wouldn't be acceptable today for the most part, right? But I don't think just because you got in prison, you never got out of prison. I mean, that's not true. I mean, in fact, they imprisoned people who had, um, you know, like the poor, poor houses for people who couldn't pay their debts. We don't do that anymore. Thank, thank God, I'd be in there for my loan debt, you know? Um, but yeah, I mean, it wasn't like anybody went in and never came out.
Well, the reason why I think I was asking that is because in the Pennsylvania system, um, it seemed like you had to show that you had repentance. And I was like, well, like, who determined how, you know?
Right, when you're sort of thinking about the values or the differences between those two system, that's another thing. Like if the, if the, if the, if the measure is have you reformed, how do you demonstrate that your heart has changed, right? That you've repented, um, but they did have, you know, uh, uh, you know, pastors and others who would kind of come, there were opportunities for that kind of like, you know, contact with, with priests and or whatever, clear years. Things like that, so.
Okay, because I know when you said that the Pennsylvania or the Quakers had their, um, church services, it was quiet. And then someone would speak, like just stand up and speak. So that's why I was kind of wondering because it, I wasn't sure.
Right, and you know, just try, don't get too mired down in the details, you know, sort of think about the big picture, the values about the difference between Pennsylvania and Auburn. And what their values and goals, like what reflection that has on assumptions about human nature, right? So for example, Pennsylvania, it's actually kind of more of a positive view of human nature that with repentance, people can actually reform. But the Auburn is really sort of like that in a way, the people reforming is through like, like mechanization of your behavior and being treated like somebody who can't control themselves. And that's kind of a more of a negative view of human nature, right? It's sort of like
The Auburn system was more of like a military type.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right, okay, right.
But in that system, they, even though, they, because like in the Pennsylvania system, you were by yourself. But in the Auburn system, you're with a group of people, you still didn't talk, right? I mean, there was like no conversation.
Exactly.
Worked together, you ate together and you slept together, but you didn't. But in the Auburn system, one thing I don't think was clear either, um, were they housed together? I, I mean, they were housed all together, obviously in the same prison, but, um, you know how in Pennsylvania you had your own cell? And it's not like today where you're like overcrowded. And Auburn, were they housed with more than one person or was it individual cells?
I think it was individual cells, but it could have changed, you know, I mean, that, you know, like the Auburn system is more about the general concept of congregate, right?
Okay.
Where sort of like, you go and you sleep at night and then you get up and then you congregate with others, but you congregate with them, like you said, in a military style. Uh, it was, and, and a lot of students, when they're trying to choose between the one or the other that they want. Uh, you know, they're, they're sort of like, it would be really hard for me to be in the Auburn system because I'd be around other people, but I'd get in trouble if I interacted with them. Other students are like, I could not handle the Pennsylvania system because it's solitary and, and I need to be around other people. Even if I can't like actually engage with them, right? Um, because it's, gives you a sense of community, even though it's a really truncated kind of like controlled type of community. So those are the kind of things, you know, to sort of think about. We know that in Pennsylvania, you would be housed alone. In Auburn, it's probably similar to what we have today, you know, if there's space, you get your own cell, if you don't, you probably have to share that cell.
Okay, I wa, I just wasn't sure because I know if you had two people in one cell, you would have to, you know what I mean, that would be kind of
Right. All right, well, excellent, well, I will stop sharing my screen. And, uh, so that's it, I'll convert this and make it into a, 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 a video for others so that they can take advantage of the great questions that you guys have asked. Uh, so good luck, like I said, I'll be around all weekend. If you have questions, don't hesitate to contact me. And, um, good luck on your final exam and good luck in the future, okay?
Thank you.
All right, bye, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.